Are we ready? Welcome, everybody, to the November 14th City Council meeting. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the fathers for which it stands, the Constitution, the Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States of America.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call of the members of the City Council. Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Pescanti.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 24th?
All in favor, all opposed? Before we continue, Vice President Serino would like to take a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the council, the residents of Ward Six, my family, friends, and neighbors. Earlier this month, the people of the city of Revere went to the polls in a statewide election day. That election having passed, though still nearly a year away, we are now officially on our municipal election cycle for the 2023 city elections. As we begin to contemplate candidacies, I wanted to announce tonight to my constituents in West Revere and in North Revere that I will not be seeking reelection to the Revere City Council in 2023. It may seem unconventional that a councillor would announce so far in advance his intention, but I am doing so because I have made up my mind, and like my predecessor councillor Patch, I wanted to give enough lead time for decent, good candidates in Ward Six to consider a run and to emerge to fill the people's seat that I will be leaving in January 2024. As we approached the holidays, I thought it an appropriate time for potential candidates to discuss with their families the prospect of a 2023 run. This decision to not seek reelection to a third term on the council was not made in haste, but after careful consideration and much discussion with my family and closest friends. Having turned 30 this year, I have spent some time contemplating and reassessing my goals for myself in both my personal and professional life, and where I see myself when my current term expires in 2024 and beyond. Having had the honor of being elected by the people of Ward Six in 2019, I came on to the council in January 2020 with a set of goals, including promoting economic development in the ward in the city, helping to alleviate flooding in West Revere, and working towards solutions to traffic flow in the ward. On the economic development front, I made a commitment during my initial campaign that I would work to promote commercial development in the ward. In 2020, our neighborhood was dealt a blow when the Showcase Cinema abruptly closed in the height of the COVID pandemic. I was disappointed and ideally would have preferred to see a development built in its place that was entertainment-driven and would draw families to the site. However, in the end, I was glad that the redevelopment of the movie theater did not bring more residential units, but rather will bring job opportunities for Revere residents, revenue from increased property taxes, and new excise taxes paid to the city. Similarly, I made a commitment that I would fight for commercial development and oppose any residential development on Squire Road, which I have viewed as Ward Six's main business corridor. Though some decisions with regard to development on Squire Road recently might have been contentious, I am proud to say that during my tenure, the city has not approved any large-scale residential or mixed-use buildings on Squire Road in my ward. With regard to alleviating flooding in the neighborhood, I want to give kudos to Don Caramella, the Water and Sewer Department, and Mayor Rigo and his administration for the administration's investment in the Toscano-Asti Geneva neighborhood to fix the incredible pooling of water that Toscano and Asti used to see during heavy rainstorms. Along these lines, the city, again under the direction of Donnie Caramella, is currently working with the cities of Malden, Everett, and the state on a plan to clean Town Line Brook, which is going to have a major positive impact on flooding that the neighborhood experiences when the Brook fills up for years to come. When it comes to traffic patterns in the ward, I think I have been pretty bold, to say the least. Though it was controversial, I listened to my residents of Sagurne Street and Derby Road, who for years have been plagued with speeding vehicles going to and from Squire Road, and as the ward councillor, I advocated to the Traffic Commission to change the oneways on those streets. The change was met with a lot of criticism, and understandably so for the streets that became impacted as a result. But you know what? We tried something that had not been tried before by my predecessors, albeit for 60 days, and because we took that initial step, we have the attention of the Traffic Commission and the administration to take a serious look at the traffic flow on the streets off of Squire Road that they see every day. This resulted in the city agreeing to bring on an outside traffic engineer to determine ways to help traffic flow in the area. I intend to see this through over the next several months, and I am hopeful that the end result is going to be something that will be beneficial to the residents who live off of Squire Road in West Revere. This will be the first time in a number of years that concrete action steps are being taken to alleviate traffic woes in Ward Six, and although there have been some growing pains, I believe ultimately a solution will be found that will be amicable to everyone in the West Revere neighborhood. Additionally, two matters in particular that I'm most proud of shepherding through the council during my time up here have been the creation of the city of Revere's Veterans Fund, which is helping veterans in our city in various ways, and the ordinance that now requires meetings of most public bodies of the city to begin at 5:00 PM to allow taxpayers the opportunity to attend. Oftentimes, many people forget that at one time not very long ago, City Council Subcommittee meetings sometimes began as early as 3:30 PM, and meetings of bodies like the Traffic Commission and the ZBA were at 4:00 PM. Though I would have liked to have seen that time be 6:00 to allow even more people the opportunity to attend these public meetings, I learned that compromise was key in getting that ordinance changed at all to 5:00 PM. All of this is to say that my reason for not standing for reelection, simply put, is that I have determined that two full terms, or four years, will have been an adequate amount of time for me to complete the work that I set out to achieve as the Ward Six councillor, and that after this term, it is not only appropriate, but it is right for me to step aside to clear the way for someone else in West Revere, or even perhaps North Revere, with new ideas and a fresh perspective. This is how our politics should work in order that our City Hall not become stagnant. I ran for this City Council seat because I wanted to help people and do some good for our little corner of the city. I never intended to stay many terms, not many people realize that, but I think two terms will have been sufficient time to have made a positive difference. My point of personal privilege tonight is not a farewell speech or a resignation speech, and I won't be going into goodbyes and expressions of appreciation as there is still over a year left to my term, and I intend to continue working hard for the people of Ward Six for the remainder of that term. My remarks tonight should also not be taken as a farewell to Revere politics, as I would certainly consider and entertain the possibility of a run for councillor-at-large or higher office sometime beyond 2023 and a few years down the line if the time is right and I feel that my experience in voice can contribute to a future conversation in the city. In closing, serving as the Ward Six councillor has been the greatest honor of my life up until this point, and I will always be humbled that the ward twice sent me to City Hall to be their voice. For now, I look forward to continuing to advocate for the people of West Revere and North Revere and working with my colleagues on the council for the next 13 months. Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Vice President Serino, for those words. We're fortunate to have you for the next 13 months, so while that will be, it will be sad to see you go, we respect your wishes, and you've served Ward Six proud. Thank you. If we can continue with a moment of personal privilege, Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's going to be hard to go after Councilor Serino's statement, and I know as a councillor, this body of councillors, we're very sad that you're leaving, but I wish you bigger and better things ahead. Last week, the city of Revere acquired McMackenfield after years of negotiation. It really took a village to get things done. I would like to thank Mayor Rigo and his team, especially Cheryl McCormick, for their hard work. I would also like to personally thank my councillor to my right, Patrick Keith, who negotiated with me, and all my other fellow councillor members who worked with me for five years to regain the city's ownership of this field. Finally, I would like to stop the rumors. I know there's a lot of rumors out there that's saying, oh, this land's going to be taken and made condos. No, it isn't. It's used, the use is going to be for a multi-sports youth playground for the kids, and it's going to take millions of dollars to fix it, so it's going to take time, but I know Mayor Rigo is on cleaning up the park as soon as he can, so I just wanted to thank everybody. Thank you.
Okay. If possible, if there's no objections, I would like to suspend rules in taking up the late communication for, we have Solicitor Paul Capizzi here. If there's no objection, thank you.
Late communication from the city solicitor, providing an update on Councilor Rizzo's motions, 299 and 246, relative to the police department.
Solicitor.
First want to say to Richard Serino, I live in Ward Six, good luck with whatever you do, and thank you for your service. I'm just here to provide an update on Council Order 2299 and 22246, which is Councilor Rizzo's motion for information from the administration about the following: the hiring guidelines for chief of police and assessment center results from 2017, allegations of misconduct against current Chief Callahan, and accounting of all financial settlements on behalf of police officers and the reasons for the settlement since 2017, and a list of all disciplinary actions against members of the RPD. Though no timeline was provided in the motion, I assume the timeline is 2017 to the present. So I'm here to just say that, given the volume of information requested, the logistics involved in segregating this information, the determination as to what topic may or may not be conducted in executive session or open meeting, the subsequent advertising for executive session, and the requirement to notify any individual who may be discussed in executive session if the topic qualifies, I plan to have all a part of this information available for the second City Council meeting in December, which is December 12th, I believe. And if not at that time, I will do my best to get this at the earliest possible meeting in January of 2023.
Council Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Paul, thank you, first of all, for at least having the initiative to come and respond. This motion was put in back in September. I thought it was a pretty significant one, given the details and the request that I made in the motion itself. The article that had come forward through NPR, Public Radio WBUR regarding this, I know none of us on the City Council, before reading it, before hearing it, had any inkling that this was going on, other than maybe through the rumor mill, and now to have to read it was very disheartening, was city councillors here, were supposed to have knowledge of what goes on in the city, and when you find out that there's settlements being made with employees because of bad conduct, you know, the way you get that information should not be through the radio or through a written article. I understand that some of this you think might be appropriate for executive session as opposed to one, but I just do have a question, and it has to do with a communication that you had sent me, and basically, if I could just, it's just very short, it says, "One of the purposes for which executive session may be held, and one of the purposes seems relevant to your motion is to discuss the following: reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health." Rather than, "professional competence of an individual ought to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual." So where am I reading this wrong? Like, I understand, okay, so we'll go to executive session, if it's going to be discussing someone's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health. But then it says, "Rather than professional competence," or "discuss discipline, dismissal of complaints, or charges brought against." So that seems to me like that would not have to go to executive session. Am I reading that wrong?
Yes, if you look at the first, the second, or third clause, "or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against," that's where I'm focusing on the executive session portion, because, and I'm not prepared to discuss the merits of anything, but if we are going to talk about why an officer was terminated, or why something was done, what action the city took that affects the reputation, the character, or relates to the discipline or dismissal of that particular officer, I'm erring on the side of caution in putting that in executive session, because that individual has a right to be at that executive session.
I have no problem with it being here, I'm just saying.
It's the logistics of figuring out what they are, who they are, what can be discussed in open meeting law, because not necessarily all of it has to be discussed in executive session, and then figuring out with Ashley when we can do it, when they can be up here, that kind of thing. That's where the delay was, and I will openly fall on my sword. Mayor Rigo had asked me back when you submitted this motion to get to work on this, and other than that email I sent you, I did not do much else with that, although right now I'm also filling in as the HR director, so there is a lot of stuff going on. So that's part of the reason. I'm not using that as an excuse, I just want to let you know that it's on the list of many other things that have to be done, and I thought you earned the right for my response, having asked for this back then, and so, and Mayor Rigo had asked me to come here and do this, so to his credit, he's also on board with this.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, well, I'm appreciative of that, and I'm pretty confident the taxpayers would be appreciative of that, because if we're making numerous settlements with numerous police officers, as I've been told, you know, I think we have a right to understand where our tax dollars are being spent and why they're being spent the way they are. You know, typically settlements aren't made, and I'm not using any names here, and I'm not using any even specific cases, but if we're spending tax dollars making settlements, there's got to be a problem somewhere that needs to be addressed. We shouldn't be making settlements unless the city is, you know, our employees of the city are making some pretty egregious errors. That would be the only reason why I would think that I would ever spend tax dollars to, you know, to try to make things right with specific employees. So I appreciate you being here tonight, I hope you're shooting for the second meeting, our first meeting in, second meeting in December, first meeting in January.
I understand there's a third meeting in December, but this would not be appropriate for that meeting, so the second meeting in December, if not the earliest in January that I can get it to you. I just wanted you all to know that it's not languishing, that it is going to be addressed.
Okay. I appreciate it, Paul, thank you. I understand you do have other things on your plate, but again, just from my perspective, through you, Mr. President, from my perspective, you know, this is an important issue, and I'm not dealing with all the other issues that you're dealing with, so understood.
I am not here to determine what's important and what is not important.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Capizzi, for addressing the issue, and we look forward to seeing what happens on the second meeting in December, December 12th. Thank you. Back to the regular order of business.
Next up is the Economic Development Subcommittee report.
Council Silvestri.
Yes, councillor. We had a favorable recommendation that a lot of land being donated from Paul Ferragamo was approved favorably.
Okay, we'll take a roll call on that.
Shall the City Council accept a donation of a certain parcel of land described as map block and parcel 4-90-002 Revere Beach Parkway from Paul Ferragamo for conservation purposes? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Pescanti?
Yes.
Yes, the donation of land has been accepted?
The other motion from Councilor Keith, we voted to keep that in committee.
Okay. The last one?
In the last one, we just had a discussion on the economic impact of cannabis, recreational cannabis in the city.
So we're going to place that on file?
That was as well kept in committee.
That was actually kept in committee, that's right. Okay. Great.
Communications, calendar item number six, communication from the Board of Assessors requesting that the City Council hold a public hearing for the purpose of establishing the minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2023.
We're going to refer this, oh, I'm going to refer this to a public hearing on November 28th? Is that okay?
Calendar item number seven, communication from Joseph Festa Construction Company, 385 Broadway, requesting acceptance by donation certain parcels of land on Naples Road for conservation purposes.
I spoke with Mr. Festa today, and he wasn't going to be able to make it, didn't think it was necessary for him to be here, so we'll take a roll call on this.
Shall the City Council accept a donation of certain parcels of land described as lots 195 through 200 Naples Road from Joseph Festa Construction Company, Inc., for conservation purposes? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Pescanti?
Yes.
Yes, the donation of land has been accepted? Motions, calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the City Council award certificates of commendation to the Revere High School girls volleyball team and their coaches for finishing their season undefeated with a record of 20-0.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Step aside, Newmanland Patriots, let's do it.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Coach Leanne O'Hara Memo for being the recipient of the GBL Volleyball Coach of the Year after her spring 2022 season coaching the RHS boys volleyball team.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Step aside, Bill Belichick.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Motion presented by Council President Pescanti that the mayor requests Representative Turco to direct the Department of Conservation and Recreation to install a crosswalk at the Atlantica at 360 Revere Beach Boulevard in the interest of public safety.
Thank you, if I can speak from the chair. I had the pleasure of speaking to several residents that live in that complex, and come to find out, some of the senior citizens also that live in that complex, come to find out that that is the only building on the Revere Beach Boulevard that does not have a crosswalk outside the entrance of the building. Couple of senior citizens, and the traffic and the speeding on the Boulevard has been a constant problem, and a lot of people that live on the beach have been complaining about that, and I just felt there's no reason why that building should be, not have, should not have the crosswalks for people that live in that building. There's no reason for them to have to walk further up to the St. George or walk down to Kelly's, so I just think it's a very much needed thing, public safety thing, for the people in that building. That's it. Any comments from the council? Council Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commending you for putting in this motion, you know, crosswalks are one of those issues that sometimes go unnoticed. You just, like this crosswalk, that building has been up for so many years, and I believe it was brought up to DCR probably a decade ago, and it's nonsense that they don't have the courtesy to respond, and it's been, how long since the Atlantica has been up and running? So I commend you for putting this forth, I hope they get working on it, and there's a crosswalk.
Yes, and just to elaborate a little bit more, I've spoken to Representative Turco, he's all on board on it as well, and knowing him, he will fight for the residents as well, so hopefully that does get taken care of. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Late motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor be requested to contact our state delegation to direct Mastott to halt the reconfiguration of Bennington Street. The reconfiguration project will decrease four lanes of traffic to two lanes of traffic for the purpose of establishing a bike lane on both sides of Bennington. This reconfiguration would be catastrophic to Revere residents, especially Beauchamp, where Bennington Street is the access road for evacuation in the event of an emergency. Bennington Street is also a major roadway for regional commuters to and from Boston, and this could bring traffic to a standstill. Councilor Zambudo is recused from discussion on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. So I just found out about this, I wasn't involved in the So I just found out about this, I wasn't involved in the conversation when they were having the Zoom because of conflict, so I just found out that they were, I didn't know about Bennington Street until recently. I just want to say that not every street in Massachusetts should be turned into bike lanes, some streets are essential only for traffic. Bennington Street, I feel, is one of them. Getting rid of two lanes of a major roadway that link people from other cities and towns coming to and from Boston is a huge mistake. Not only would it this create a traffic nightmare, it is the evacuation route to get out of Beauchamp if there was an emergency. I wasn't involved in the conversation for this, so I am asking that Mastott come in front of the council during a December or January meeting and do the presentation that they're expected to do to change Bennington Street before they do it. I think Julie DiMauro is involved in this, and maybe Clerk Ashley, you could get in touch with Julie DiMauro to set up some sort of a presentation for them to come in front of the council and propose what they're going to do, so we can see why. So that's what I'm asking, thank you.
Councillor Morabito? Just want to say, the first time I heard about this was when councillor McKenna brought it to my attention, and I actually think it's, the city council should get some kind of notification if they are planning to do something of this nature. We shouldn't be finding out last minute that there's going to be a meeting, we should have proper and ample time so we can collaborate our thoughts, go to our constituents, get their feedback, this just doesn't happen in a month, you've got to reach out to people, and it's only fair that as a board of the city that we know about issues like this.
Agreed. Any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Late motion presented by council president Visconti, that the mayor request the city's state delegation to file a bill authorizing the installation of a plaque, bench, or other suitable marker in honor of Joseph DeSantis at the Staff Sergeant Paul W. Cronin Memorial Arena in the City of Revere for his many years of dedicated service to Revere Youth Sports.
Thank you, just speaking from the chair, you know, every once in a while, you come across a person that really goes above and beyond the call of duty for youth sports, and during, let's say, mid-August to March, Joe DeSantis is at the rink probably every single day, making sure that Revere Youth Hockey, what it once was called, is running smooth. And he's not only been the president of the league for god knows how long, it has to be probably 15-plus years, and been part of the league for well over 30, but he's the face of the youth hockey program in Revere. When you think of Revere Youth Hockey, you think of Joe DeSantis, and that's the honest truth, because, you know, people that have left and gone on and moved on to different cities, and, you know, I talked to those people, and their kids have grown up, and now they have grandkids that are playing youth hockey, and while my kids are in the program, you know, I have the luxury of talking to them and saying, yeah, we're still in the Revere Youth Hockey program, and the first thing that they always say is, Joe DeSantis still there? And I said, I won't let him leave, okay? But what truly really makes this gentleman special is his love for the kids, and he never, as the president, he has never let money stand in the way of kids skating, okay? No matter what, and he's going to kill me for saying this, because Joe and I during that time, from March, or let's say from August to March, probably speak to each other a few times a day, and, but come to find out, because hockey is such an expensive sport, many, many times, he would pay the tuition out of his own pocket, okay, for kids to skate. So never mind the time that he puts into the program, you know, for the love of the sport, and making sure the high school keeps rebuilding and making sure that they have hockey players, but he actually was willing to put money out of his own pocket to make sure that these kids were playing, and that goes a lot, okay, for somebody willing to do that. So I really thought, while he has been taking a, not a, I won't use the word retire, so I won't let him retire, but he's taking a little sabbatical, let's say, I thought it was necessary, and I thought it was well-deserved, that we recognize Joe DeSantis and all the work that he has done over the years, because, you know, it truly takes a special person to do what he did, and not having a child in the program for well over 16, 17 years. So I commend him, he's been a dear friend of mine for god knows how long, and I think it's well-deserved. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Calendar item number 14 is a late communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ellie Pagan Vargas to the Commission on Disabilities.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I?
Yes, I'm sorry, councillor Cagliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an appointment to the Commission on Disabilities, and I know that I had just asked the council to vote something up here instead of sending it to subcommittee, and I just want to state, I don't want to make that a habit. In this case, where this appointee is handicapped and it's difficult for her to get around, instead of having her come up here in extra time, I've spoken to her on the phone, I've gone over her resume, I've also touched base with Ralph Tachico, and he would be also in agreement with me, if we could vote this in tonight, I would greatly appreciate it.
There's no objection? Roll call?
Shall the city council confirm the appointment of Ellie Pagan Vargas to the Commission on Disabilities? Councillor Cagliandro?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and council president Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the appointment has been confirmed.
Thank you, everyone.
There is no further business, I would like to wish everybody and the residents out there a happy Thanksgiving, and wish everybody the best. Thank you. Oh, no, yes, yes, we won't have, the next meeting is on the 28th, so, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.